Excellent. All right.
Ms. Summers will provide the next question.
Thank you. Montelee has applied for a special exception to operate a venue facility conference center at their property located at 513 F T Valley Road, tax map number 5431G and 31F. The parcels upon which the use is requested totals 36.529 and it is zoned agricultural. This use is pursuant to the Rappahannock County Code 17036C with additional regulations of 17064G. Currently, the property is an orchard and a market with fruit trees and a market building. It is operated seasonally. It is currently proposed to have a limited number of special events such as weddings, reunions, gatherings, et cetera. Attendance for such events would be on average of 100 to 150 people. No new buildings are being proposed, but temporary tents may be used for some events. The planning commission held a public hearing in which they heard concerns from the public. After much consideration, they recommended approval with the following conditions. One, up to 12 events per calendar year. Two, no more than two events per month. Three, maximum number of guests for each event is 150. Four, hours of operation, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. No amplified music after 10:00 p.m. Five, compliance with all state and local regulations. Six, the permit terminates upon sale of the property. Seven, items one through four of the applicant proffered conditions in response to the planning commission, which were the septic incapacity. All lighting will be down shielded, vegetative buffer for the parking and the parking area. Eight, no overnight accommodations or restaurants on the site. Nine, if anticipated average daily patron count plus planned events exceeds 250 people total, additional restrooms will be provided. No additional activities regarding water except hand and fruit washing. And 10, the permit will be reviewed after one year. This public hearing was advertised to the public in accordance with 152204 of the Code of Virginia. And the applicant is present if you all have any questions for him.
If I, if I just ask questions to you, Ms. Summers. So this is coming in under a conference center definition in the zoning ordinance? And I know that we have these unwieldy definitions that are not necessarily on point in some cases. Are there any other definitions within the zoning ordinance ordinance that would have applied here? Or is this the only, only place in which something contemplated like this would fit?
I would say that this would be the only appropriate place to put this use under currently, the way the ordinance is written.
Okay. And then if I heard you correctly, the, the time limit placed on the 12 events per year, no more than two per month was 10 to 10. But then I believe I heard you say no amplified music after 10, which to me seems inconsistent with the fact that the hours are 10 to 10. So, and I don't know if-
How is that inconsistent?
Well, they can't operate after 10, so why is there something about no amplified music after 10?
I think that was just to be perfectly clear.
Okay.
I mean, there are other uses on the property too.
Right, but we're talking about an event, special exception permit, hours 10 to 10, and then there's a provision, no amplified music after 10. I'm just saying, I think it's internally inconsistent. Is that, was the intent to just after, after hours, no continued music playing from events?
Yeah, I think that would be another way to phrase it.
Okay. And then could you talk about the vegetative buffer, what, distance area? What, what is the requirement there?
So, the, there was no specific language included in the planning commission's recommendation. The owner-
I'll put it up if you want to read it from the screen.
I can see that for.
And this was something that came up in the review process to make it with consistent, consistent with other previous applications and the expectations for those, for those areas.
Right, so the applicant offered item four of the proffered conditions to the planning commission, a vegetative buffer. A dwarf form of an English laurel to be planted and placed along the tree line run in parallel to Route 231, where the road height is even with the pasture. In addition to the proposed shrubs, there are currently six large oak trees, which act as a partial barrier between the road and the parking area.
Okay. I got it.
So they included, the planning commission recommendation included that language.
Okay.
And that was something that we heard a lot from the public too, at the planning commission level.
Because it's 231 and it says scenic-
That's correct.
-road. And then the additional restrooms, you always talk so fast, so I- I know, for me, but you still- What was the number, what was the-
So if, if they're holding an event, if it anticipated average daily patron count, plus a planned event, so if they have the regular customers of the orchard and the market, plus a planned event, if they exceed 250 people, they will need to provide additional restrooms such as porta potties.
And then are you, if I could just ask, so all these recommendations or stipulations, restrictions that the planning commission put in place, it sounds like you proffered the vegetative buffer as maybe a, as, as one way to make the permit more palatable.
You want to come up to the mic, please?
Yeah, I just want to make-
There are people online that-
I just want to make sure that the, the, the conditions that have been put on the permit, that they're all acceptable to you.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to be very accommodating to what the county would like to see and being, being proper stewards of the land. So, you know, when you look at, well, the area all there, what made the most sense from a perspective was basically from the southern entrance, there's a northern entrance as well, but from the southern entrance to, between the oak trees in that area, because you can't tell on the grade, but it slopes to, slopes down to the left, basically plants, you know, like Luke and laurels, basically, but-
Okay.
Trying to find something that deer don't want to eat. Because I really don't want to attract them closer to the road.
Right.
So, anyway, so basically from this, from where the, that first entrance is to about, a little bit past the second tree, in that, in that general-
I see, okay.
In that general vicinity, I mean, to plant it all the way down would be probably counterproductive, but-
Okay, but it sounds like everything that the planning, you're okay with the-
We are.
-the set of conditions, okay. Thanks.
I have a quick question. When, and maybe Michelle, I guess you could answer this, when it says no restaurant onsite, you're not allowed to have a restaurant, so what does that refer to?
So there was another special permit granted for-
Montpelier?
There you go. I think that was a condition listed on that permit and some of the neighbors had brought out concerns if, that they would feel more comfortable with some of those conditions that maybe had been placed on the other permit be placed on this one as well, and that was one of them.
So this would outlive ordinance change as well? So as you point out, in agriculture, there's really no opportunity to have a restaurant today. But that doesn't mean a future board couldn't change that. And so this would take away that right, should the ordinance make it by right or something?
So the food is catered, food truck?
Catered, food truck, whatever temporary meal service for whatever, whatever purpose it could be.
And back to the 250 question, Michelle. There, I would assume become a time where he's not going to know that, oh my God, I just got two busloads of people that came in. There's nothing that says he's going to have to stop business or ask people to leave. And is it the 250 all at one time or 250 in the day?
So, you know, that, that is a function of how you write the condition. So the planning commission tried to get at the point that there's a, there's a day use, so to say, and then there is an event use. And so how do we recognize both of them when it comes to not overloading the current septic system? And the concept was if you have too many people there, you just need to bring porta potties in. This is how they chose to word it. You know, from a compliance standpoint, if there's a call and there's 500 people there, then, and there aren't any porta potties, then it's a violation and that would, would be a problem for them in the future when they want to extend their permit. It's unlikely that, there's no real avenue to have a court order to stop them and bar them from doing something on the spot.
It's a guideline.
Well, it's, it's a firm requirement of the permit, but the enforcement process is a future impact. It would be their revocation or, you know, an issue with getting some, an extension some future time.
What I mean, it's, it's basically saying, saying to the property owners, if you know you're going to be in a high volume time of year, then make-
Ever say the right thing.
Make an adjustment, do the right thing.
But if he knows he's got revenue rolling from the orchard, he probably wants to have his event some other time.
Exactly.
So, I mean, the septic, septic system is rated 250 gallons per day. That would assume 250 flush, people flush the toilet one time, which, anyway.
Would be a bigger one.
Yep.
Well, I think the planning commission recommendation recognizes that the owner wants to also have a very healthy and functioning septic system.
Right.
And he knows his business the best and how many people they normally see in a day. I mean, I assume you have a cash register, it tells you how many visitors, how, how much your sales are, how much, and so you sort of have a foot count.
Yeah.
And that you are the best person equipped to, to manage those details when they arise.
Yeah, definitely don't want to have to come and pump the system.
Yeah.
And it sounds like you all did a pretty thorough job on this, I mean, it-
We tried. The other, the other thing that we heard a lot from the public that we were sort of challenged to work through at the planning commission level was noise, which the Montpelier application and approval had much more stringent language regarding noise. And I believe basically it said, no noise will extend beyond the property line once the adjoining properties. Which is tough.
Tough enforcement.
But you know what I thought of, that we have done before on the RSM application, which ironically then came right back up again as we were involved in this process, is that we did place a stipulation of no noise traveling beyond the property line in excess of 60 decibels, which I think is a very reasonable stipulation that we did not hone in on at the planning commission level. But that certainly we could take up if we were so inclined.
You don't have a whole, you've got one neighbor, in that yellow house, but that's pretty far away. Is this, this is for the whole 37 acre?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six acres.
So, so Mike and Susan are, as the crow flies, half a mile?
Yeah, and then there's the yellow house and the other side.
Oh, the yellow house, which is empty, yeah, Fletcher or something.
You don't have too many neighbors there.
We don't.
The thing that we always need to think about is that noise doesn't always travel the way that we think it will in these valleys. And somebody will say, I heard the flagpole chain clanging at Stewart Field from my living room because of the way that the sound travels in the county. And so I do want to be very sensitive to that. As you can imagine, the planning commission, between this application and the application for multiple tourist times arising in the same meeting, I think people are very concerned that the neighborhood could change, and rightfully so. And that's, I, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the, the sound issue that a lot of people spoke to at the planning commission level.
So this is subject to review after a year, but my understanding from the Rappahannock County Code is it would be an administrative review.
Right, so I want to make sure you touched on that. Well, there's opportunities for the board and in the five years, Michelle and I have been here, it's not been included in any permits, and that's covered by section 17058. And essentially, in a condition of the permit would be that it could renew in a year, and then the administrator would be told how many years to, it would move forward, right? So if you get one year and then if everything's clean and no complaints, then she would have direction to set it for five years, or 10 years, or eight years, or whatever the board wanted. But that would have to be included in the approval, whatever that time period is.
It seems like, my point about, my point is that's only a year, and it's, it's a perfect test and without having to go down the rabbit hole of like how much sound, you know, is reasonable and how to measure it and all that stuff. At least it gives a mechanism if, if your very scant population of neighbors were to be like troubled by what sounds like pretty low-key occasional events, then that would be brought up later. But it seems like that, that's kind of a perfect test period and as long as, I mean, out of respect for the property owner, as long as you don't have to go through this whole re-permitting process and be handled administratively, absent any complaints, then you're good to go. So I think it seems like you all put, put it together pretty well.
We tried.
Mr. Fraser-
Got quite a bit of time on it.
Yeah.
Mr. Fraser, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I've got some questions. Is this a typo? We've got 36 acres in the same piece of property, they have 10,000 fruit trees. They raise 100 head of cattle, now they have 250, a venue with up to 250 people with vehicles on it?
So, where the building sits and where the venue would be is 36 acres on two tax maps. The rest of the farm has another six or seven parcels to it. So the whole farm totals around 660 acres. And so the cattle are on the backside. The orchard actually spans over the 36 acres into the other parcels. The fenced area is about 44 acres for the orchard itself.
How many acres in total do you own?
In Rappahannock County?
In that, I don't know, contiguous in that area?
Well, actually, they join at the top of Brown's Mountain, so it becomes contiguous.
Okay.
So in Rappahannock County, it's about 860 or so.
That's ultimately the end point of Mr. Fraser's question, is much more going on there than these two parcels by the road.
Correct.
Where the cattle would be eating all your apples.
That's what the fence is for.
Anything else?
We're only permitting, we're only permitting this special exception on a total of 36 acres.
Correct, these, these two, I've put it on the screen, I don't know if you're able to see the screen right now, that there's these two lots shown on this plot.
It's making less sense, I don't know what you were going to do all that. That should have been made plain in the application.
Mr. Fraser, just so you're aware, I went out on, I went out on Saturday and it's expansive property and, I mean, you know, you don't have to take my word for it, but, I mean, the, the spot for the tent where they would have events is decidedly low-key. And I think the stipulations or the restrictions or conditions regarding vegetative buffer, I think the planning commission members already contemplated the fact that their, their farm store and the orchard are on the front side of the property toward the road. And that's, I mean, both convenient and perfect for the type of event, but also it's right up close to the road. So I think everything the planning commission has recommended makes a lot of sense given, given the location of this vast collection of properties of the contemplated event space.
And a large number of your trees are planted on dwarfing root stock, so they're densely planted.
Correct.
So, Mr. Fraser, they're not on M111, semi-standard, they're, they're highly, it's really dense, densely planted. It looks different than you would think of, you know, 18 feet between trees. That's not what's going on here.
Right, it's, it's all in a trellis system, the trees are anywhere from four to five feet apart. Just, please come out and look at it, it's pretty awesome.
Well, it's unfortunate I didn't get a chance to get up here and look at it, but it just doesn't make any sense that we're going to do all this on a total of 36 acres, or we had a typo, or again, something was missing here. I really think it should have been in the application.
What should have been in the application?
The amount of adjacent acreage that is all under the same ownership.
Well, they will have no authorization to do anything having to do with events on the adjacent parcels. That's an important takeaway, and that would be an enforcement issue.
In the original application-
Right, but I mean, if, if anybody was to pull this up and look at it, and, you know, it talks about the large agricultural presence on the property, there's no possible way to have such a large agricultural presence on the 36 acres that they're talking about permitting on. They're, they're different parcels, but the, the write-up is as if it's all one parcel. Am I mistaking something there?
It's two parcels that he's put together, 18 acres apiece, and I was, I was just trying to describe to you that if you go up there, they've got thousands of trees on trellis.
I understand that, but it doesn't tell you that, it doesn't, the average person can't pick that up from looking at this application.
I'm, I'm having a hard time saying what the difference would make.
It's 36 acres total that they want to do the events on, plus they have this agricultural process, if you will, of, of, you know, 10,000 trees and 100 head of cattle.
The cattle weren't on that property, on that property, right?
I think that's his point.
Yeah.
That's his point, that it wasn't clear that there were other parcels around the 36.
Let me, the explicit statement-
It doesn't read properly.
The applicant's required explicit statements on the screen and it speaks to just the two parcels.
I just had a quick question about the original application letter, said that you were requesting a five-year term on this?
I mean, under the initial vote, but then we agreed that-
Okay.
Have it one-year review, make sure everything's running smoothly, everybody's happy, there's no complaints from the neighbors. If everything goes well, then-
I see.
-the permit is reviewed.
Perfect.
And so if the boards have a mind to issue this permit, or this special exception, then, and you are of a mind to have a one-year review, you must also say that the term of the permit on successful review is whatever.
You want to make a motion?
Sure.
Well, you got to have a public hearing first.
Well, that would be important.
I thought, I thought we had.
We've heard ourselves.
We've heard from all the public who's here, sorry. Turn the efficient.
Um, I'm now going to open the public hearing on Mount May Conference Center. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized, come up, give us your name and the district you're in, and we can do that now. All right, no one in the courtroom?
Shocking.
I don't think there will be, but is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak during this public hearing? Please raise your Zoom hand if you do. It's going to end up in the dictionary, isn't it?
Zoom hand? Might be like a zand or something.
All right, not seeing anybody online either, I'll close the public hearing.
Ms. Smith?
I guess I'll, I'll make, go ahead and make the motion that we adopt this proposed special exception 22-07-01, as outlined in the agenda this evening, with the conditions crafted by the planning commission to include staff review after a period of one year, with a possible extension for three additional years after that review.
I'll second that motion.
A motion, a second discussion?
Is there, is there a possible way to get this, this language discrepancy addressed? It, it should read something like, located on these adjacent parcels is approximately 10,000 fruit trees in the market building.
I think the application is, is of value for this determination, but once the special exception's granted, that's the controlling document and it-
I understand, but this, you know, in the future, actually, this shouldn't have gotten this far without somebody picking up. I mean, Mr. Whitson is the one that's, he's a sharp reader of the points, but it, it's here now. And you can't possibly do all this the way it reads.
I don't, I suppose the applicant could modify their application after the fact, I'm not sure the-
I'm having a hard time, Mr. Fraser, understanding what the actual issue is. He's allowed by right to do all the agricultural activities he wants and-
Right, but the, the actual issue is that you have, that this sentence by sentence, the way that it reads, it reads, the property is currently in orchard, and we're talking about these two parcels of property, parcels are 18.26 acres apiece. And it says, the property is currently in orchard and market as well as raising about 100 head of beef cattle, located on these parcels is approximately 10,000 fruit trees and a market building. You can't possibly do all that on 36 acres and add this other event to it as well.
Of course you can, you can run your cattle through that orchard in the winter and move them. I don't understand what the issue is when he's allowed by right-
It's 100, 100 head of cattle on 36 acres.
Yeah, which you could do, you could run them through there in a day.
Grain fields?
I, I don't see the issue.
It's a simple thing.
He's allowed to do that by right, I don't, he doesn't have to ask us. Well, I'm just, I'm genuinely-
Is there a condition that you could attach to the permit that would get the end that you're looking for, Mr. Fraser?
I just wish it had been written properly. That's all I'm stating, is that it's not written properly.
But, I'm trying to ask you.
What's the, is there, are, do you have in your mind a minimum acreage threshold that you're man-
It doesn't, I'm not trying anything for a minimum acreage, I'm saying, he can't possibly do what he wrote up on 36 acres.
But they are-
I disagree with that.
That they're doing it on these parcels and additional parcels that are under the same ownership.
But it's, we're, we're talking about a zoning permit application.
I know that, but he's talking about the agricultural operation. He can't possibly do all that on 36 acres, why is that so difficult?
I think you're wrong, he can. He can run 100 cows through 36 acres, or let's say 15 of it, the back half of where the trees are planted, for two days to clean up whatever he wants and then move them off.
Do you have any cows?
And continue-
What is, what is-
And continue doing it, he's allowed to do that.
What do the agricultural activities have to do with the-
He can't possibly do all this.
Mr. Fraser, what does-
That's what I'm saying, just, just write it up the way that he's actually doing it.
I think maybe we can craft a condition and not go down too many rabbit holes.
What's a condition though? We're talking about his agricultural operations. How does it relate to an event application?
I think that we could craft a condition regarding that the additional acreage not, not to be less, that's not the, minimum 500 acres shall-
Listen, I, I think everybody's, this is what I'm saying, I'm not articulating it properly, but you're talking about 36 acres, 100 cattle, he's not doing that because he's got additional acreage. So that's all I'm saying is that he's not doing what he says he's doing because he's got more land than he's been doing at all.
I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Fraser, and I hear your frustration that it wasn't articulated properly in the application, and I, I do understand that, and I, I can see someone that might-
Somebody later on is going to want something that they're going to say, the Rappahannock County supervisor's already approved somebody doing X, Y, Z on a small amount.
We're not, we're not, we're not approving agricultural activity, this is a zoning-
I know that, you're approving a special use, and the gentleman can not possibly run 100 cattle on 36 acres plus the trees and this additional thing. Because he's using more acreage than he-
Okay, then add it, then add a phrase somewhere in there, we can, we can add a phrase, it's not a con- there's no need for a further-
It's not a condition, just make it-
Right, just say, on this parcel, which is subject to the special exception permit application, plus other parcels commonly owned by the property owner, these activities occur. That's it, it's like this parcel is, this, this, just let me try to finish here. So this parcel, or the, the two, the two parcels are part of this application, whatever the tax map number is or are, and other adjoining parcels owned by the same landowner where agricultural activities occur, or something along those lines, is that what you're seeking?
Yeah, yeah, that's all it needs, something to that effect.
I think there's an opportunity under item number six, permit terminates upon sale of the property. I think if we made a simple addition there, I may need some help exactly enumerating what it should be. But maybe permit terminates upon sale of the property or sale of contingent properties under the same ownership.
Is the thought that this use would not be appropriate if the owner didn't have the adjacent property?
That's correct.
Is that what this conversation is about?
Yes, I believe that is where we're getting.
No, that's not what it is at all.
Okay.
He just, he just, he just wants the background to be that, separate and apart from this application, the property owner has agricultural activities which are quite impressive and expansive. And I believe what Mr. Fraser is saying is, he just wants in the description or the narrative description of what is going on here to be-
So perhaps that could be captured in the minute-
So perhaps that could be captured in the minutes for this meeting, that the discussion was had, that, uh, the owner's adjacent property of however many hundreds of acres were, upon which the orchard and cattle business occurs is, you know, is separate from this thirty-six acres.
Yeah, I mean.
But part of the big picture is the buffer that that acreage provides.
Which, I, I don't see the issue, I don't wanna fight about this, but Mr. Pinkunis is allowed to run as many cows, even if it destroys the land as he wants, and he can plant as many trees as he wants, anywhere on that property, and we are not sitting here. I'll just finish, Mr. Fraser, I'm gonna finish what I'm saying.
Mr. Fraser, I didn't finish, please.
Mr. Fraser, I'm gonna finish what I'm saying.
Mr. Fraser.
So what I'm saying is, is that we are not here to decide what he can do by right, and I think that the application was properly done, the way that I've read it, it looks properly written, I understand it, maybe we disagree there and, and have that as a disagreement, but what I'm, I'm asking from you, Mr. Fraser, is how would you like it to read? You can't, you can't hear my question unless you listen to it, how would you like it to read?
I've already said that, the job got all up in the air over.
Say it again, so I can hear.
All you gotta do is just say something, something much simpler, it's just gotta say, uh, where is that, that one statement again here? It doesn't have to be this, but, you know, this difficult.
I'm not sure the document you're reading from, sir, but, uh, Ms. Summers suggested perhaps she could modify her official staff report to reflect the overall picture of the site, and then people looking back in the future can see that in that context?
Now, just a second, I'm taking that, I'm just, hold on a second, we already talked about it longer than needed to.
Oh, that's what we're.
Got the second, same thing open twice here. I don't like this. How this, oh, she's application. I'm sorry, I had a friend who, we've been talking so much, I somehow closed their piggies off. It's the, uh. Oh, it's, well, it's, it's just, oh, it's the staff report, okay, all right, and that's where it says it, proposed request, located on these parties is approximately ten thousand fruit trees, it says before that a hundred head of cattle, you can't do that.
Okay.
So it needs to say that, that they're, they run an operation like that on these lots and adjacent lots under the same ownership.
Okay.
A simple sentence.
We can certainly modify the staff report.
And to make the point clear, that the property owners have a massive area where they're doing things, it should say totaling, you know, six hundred blocks.
I mean, we came already, we're already in court on a managing, uh, issue, and, and I think that, you know, our, our, our records ought to be as accurate as possible.
That's, that's fine.
All right.
But I, I mean, Mr. Fraser, just to be clear, though, this turned into us arguing about what someone can and cannot do from an agricultural perspective, which.
I'm not talking about, you see, you took it the wrong way, I'm saying, it's not whether it's allowed or not, they can't physically do what it says it's doing.
But.
You can't constantly drive a hundred headed cow and maintain ten thousand trees in this building, in this operation they're buying aboard on these two parcels in question, it's physically impossible, and that's because they have more acres that they're using.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna call for the question.
Will the record establish like this?
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, we've got a motion and a second, um, it was one year for staff, and then three years after that, if all is well, my only question is the three versus four.
And if, if I could, ma'am, I'm sure, uh, is, yeah, are you comfortable with a three-year?
It'd be a four-year.
It'd be four.
Four-year total.
Sure, I mean, we'll have to go through the same process again four years from now, but.
Okay, it's long, all right.
Acceptable.
Okay.
All right, all right, um, is this a roll call?
It is, doesn't have to be, it can be.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I, I would vote for support if we're gonna change this staff report.
Uh, we, we will certainly change the staff report.
Just out of, just out of sense, and surrounding properties owned by.
Ms. Summers has indicated that she's more than happy to make that amendment to the staff report, and it, it may save us in the future if a similar situation comes up to explain the actions we took this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Summers, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to visiting.
Yeah, it's a gorgeous spot.
All right, um, we are now at public comment. Uh, I'm gonna open public comment, anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized and come up and give us your name and your district.
And, uh, about anything?
Anything.
Within, within reason.
It's a good thing. Uh, Sean Avamrick, Wakefield District, um, I'm just here, uh, the Board of RAPCE, Rapid Hand Center for Education, asked me to come and just, um, make a public comment about the Pathways Academy, the collaborative summer program with Rapid Hand County High School, and to thank Kier for his participation, we had a, um, I don't know if everyone's aware of what the Pathways Academy is, but it's a June program between Rapid Hand Center for Education and Rapid Hand County Public High School, uh, about twenty, about twenty students applied. Um, Jettie Capsa runs it, and, you know, her name's on it, it's like gold, um, but it's a grant, um, funded program, and so students actually get paid a stipend, they get money into an Roth IRA account, um, they go shopping on a, a day for interview clothing, and they had twenty-five workshops throughout the month of June, um, and so they learn everything from changing attire to how to, uh, budget and shop um, for groceries and how to make that healthy, um, how to sew a button, how to shop for a car, how to invest, how to open up a bank account, um, just life-ready skills, and then part of that is the students have job shadowing experiences, and these are all, sorry, rising juniors and seniors, so, um, they shadow someone for ten hours in a job that they're interested in, and they have a personal advisor that keeps track of them throughout their high school career and one year past high school, so, uh, we have a student who thought he was gonna maybe be in restaurant business, has been working that way, and comes from a long line of chefs, but said, I'm kind of interested in government, and, um, so you just have to care, and he gratefully, um, took on this student, and, um, despite, I know you said, I hope he's not afraid of government, he's so excited to go into government after his experience with y'all, um, I know this sounds bonkers, all right, after, but, um, he's just, um, really excited, and, um, that's what it's all about, you know, we have one student that shadowed at Patios because she's interested in being a chef, and they offered her a job, so now she's working in the kitchen at Patios, going into her senior year of high school here, so. Um, Pathways Academy is an amazing program, it's only in its, uh, second year, but we're hoping to continue and get funding for that, so, um, anyway, RAPCE board just asked me to come and make a statement, and thank you all for your support. Thank you very much, it sounds like it's very successful.
On Facebook, are the kids making the shopping and making the different meals, and then having the, I don't know, I guess evaluators.
Eighty, eighty dollars for how many meals?
Uh, they had me twenty, um, twenty-eight lunch plates for eight dollars, and then we had Rapid Hand Center for Education and Food County Board to come and judge the meal, um, yeah, we spent a day shopping and two for interview clothes, and they had presented to about a hundred people, um, at the end of the program, all the advisors and shadowers were there, and they had to present their experience and wear their professional clothing, and so it was, really, it'd be a fantastic program.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Not quite, but.
Top shot.
All right.
Thanks a lot for your leadership.
Anyone else during public comment? Anyone on Zoom for a public comment, please raise your hand. Not seeing any, we will close public comment. And going into old business, um, Forester Five Tourist Homes.
All right, board recalls, you had a public hearing for the Forester Tourist Homes at your last meeting, uh, that decision was tabled forward to this meeting after a discussion about use of firearms by, uh, tenants uh, of the short-term rentals, um, you, you asked, or I think the county attorney offered to, uh, do some review on that matter, he has, he's issued a memorandum of opinion that's attached, and generally suggested that he did not believe state code supported the use, the application of conditions on, um, the control of firearms, uh, in this way. So the matter is still before you, your code requires you to make a determination on a special exception with a hundred and twenty days of it first on your agenda, and, uh, that deadline is October third, twenty twenty-three.
I don't think the applicant is here this evening, I think.
Not that I'm worried.
I think we should keep it tabled.
Why?
Because I think the applicant should come and speak, we, he, he didn't speak much at the public hearing, he barely got started. When the condition was contested that was offered at the planning commission level.
I recall him speaking, so I'm not sure.
He spoke, we talked about the firearms restriction, we got a legal memorandum in response to that, I mean, that was pretty significant, I mean, do we require people to be here?
Well, we typically have, I can't think of ever putting one through without someone being present.
I mean.
At the planning commission, we definitely have.
It's a planning commission, but here, I think we, we had one, we, I think we were moving forward, it seemed as if we were moving forward to approve these, uh, the question of fi- of firearm restriction came up, we tabled it, county attorney offered what I thought was a pretty good legal memorandum, um, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't recall any other discussion at our last meeting.
That's why we tabled it, to set, to end discussion until we had a legal memorandum.
And we got it.
And we could continue, and the applicant would be present, and we could continue with whatever we had to take up.
Yeah, but the legal memorandum doesn't have anything to do with the applicant, the legal memorandum has to do with what, what we are allowed and allowed, not allowed to do.
Well, I guess to my mind, the legal memorandum brings up the question, um, that we addressed, um, also in the Blythe application for RSM, which is, I, I do think this would be a good place to possibly use the sixty-decibel limit across property lines, because I think that is a very valid concern from neighboring homeowners, and with there being possibly as many twenty, as twenty-eight people on this property, and Airbnbs, I, I do think this is something that could come up, and, uh, I think it's a reasonable application of that same standard that we opposed on, uh, the special exception for Mr. Blythe.
What do you mean by, you're saying like just the collective noise of people occupying these houses?
Uh-huh, at, at the property line, it's not to exceed sixty decibels.
We don't have a noise ordinance.
We don't, however, um, those are conditions you can place on a special exception, uh, with the intent as highlighted in each of these, um, uses that would normally not be allowed in a particular zoning district, may be allowed by special permit or special exception because that permit or exception imposes conditions and restrictions on the use in order to make it compatible with the by-right use of the zoning district, so if there's a use that, um, doesn't fit in that zoning district, and you can put a condition to make it fit, and then you can do that, and so if, if the fit issue is some noise issue, I suppose you could put a condition relative to noise.
Did you all talk about noise at the planning commission?
I mean, the complaint that led to the discharge of firearms discussion was one that, um, folks that ride their horses being spooked, um, by gunshots.
Right.
And I, I think the applicant has been very forthcoming in that he does shoot a lot on the property.
Sure.
And understandably so, and, um, of course, we should all, um, enjoy that, and it's a second amendment issue, and I do totally understand that at the planning commission, um, he seemed more than willing to, to proffer that condition, but at the board, um, obviously, there was a change of heart, and that makes me wonder how I should address the sound concerns that were brought up by neighbors.
But the sound concern brought up by neighbors, it sounds like, was related specifically to firearm use, which led to that condition, which we've now had to undo on the recommendation of the county attorney, so that's, that's now a moot point.
No, they could, they could use silencers on the, on the guns, and that would silence them, there wouldn't be any problem with decibels if they were to use silencers or some other way to quiet the firearms.
But I think it would be okay for them to shoot firearms.
I think it's totally fine for them to shoot firearms, my, and my question is, if, if you're doing that, and there's as many as twenty-eight people staying on the property, and, and that is something that clearly seems to be a pursuit on the property, what kind of noise level are you creating for the neighbors who, not coincidentally, are also the same neighbors of the application that we just heard that includes music until ten P M?
I just, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding, so, we've done a lot of these, and I don't think anybody's ever put a gun restriction, this is the first time this has come up?
It was absolutely agreed to by the applicant without hesitation at the planning commission level, and that was the only reason that it was included in this recommendation, because as soon as it came up, the owner said, that would be fine, I don't want any city slickers coming out here and shooting their guns on my property anyway.
So, I was just asking, has any tourist homes ever had, I remember one time, and I think it was Jackie Boggs, where somebody discussed that, and Mike Brown was the attorney, and said, I don't know, we should go in this direction, and they took that.
I'm not talking about a firearms restriction, I'm talking about a noise restriction.
I know, and so, um, I think that unless the applicant is specifically asking to do something, if all these other tourist homes, this discussion has never really come up about a decibel limit, which is pretty unenforceable at a property line, my question is, where are we going with this?
Well, we've done it on the RSM application before you were on the board, which was a special exception, which is essentially what, what, we've made all tourist homes now, by taking them up as a board, all tourist home applications are special exceptions, so there is a history of, and, of adding a, a decibel limit to a special exception, um, with the Blythe application, for sure, to address the neighbor's sound concerns there, and the, I think the other thing you have to remember for in terms of, uh, tourist homes, is we usually do them on a one-off basis, this is four, possibly five tourist homes, operating, uh, relatively short distance from each other, and, and the other special exception we just approved.
Is the RSM, the RSM application, I think that was before my time, explicitly defines their activities, including firearm?
The RSM application, one of the conditions was that, um, the, uh, decibel, decibels were not to, uh, exceed sixty decibels at the property line.
You'll have an opportunity to review that in the coming months. Absolutely, so they are shooting, and so, my only thing with this was that we got the opinion from Art, and I read it, this is on five hundred acres?
Four hundred.
Four hundred, and I know this property, I was on it as a kid, um, and it seems appropriate, I just don't know if I, that I feel comfortable putting on noise limits on people where the by-right use of these properties can well exceed that, um, I think that we, for me to feel comfortable with, we'd have to make some kind of argument that, you know, it just doesn't make any sense.
If you, if the applicant was.
I'm having a hard time piecing it together.
If the applicant was here, let me ask you this, what, what would you ask the applicant in this context?
Why are you all delving in so many hypotheticals today? I feel like we just spend all day going down rabbit holes.
No, I'm just asking.
I don't know what I'd ask the applicant, because he's not here, he's not here to talk about the, um, county attorney's opinion. He's, he's not here, that's why I think we should keep this table.
That, that opinion, that opinion was issued to us, not the applicant, that opinion is directed at us to guide us on making a decision on whether or not that condition can be placed on the property, the county attorney has told us, not the applicant, that we can't put that condition on the application.
Yes, we've left that behind, I don't think we have any.
It doesn't have anything to do with the applicant.
I don't think we have any disagreement about the county attorney's can, uh, memorandum, or the conditions that you, were previously placed prior to that, but what we are currently, I think, disagreeing about is whether, uh, some sort of nor- noise cap is, is appropriate, and you don't seem to believe it is, and, and I.
So your voting district, I mean, if you, if you wanna table it, that's up to you, I'm not.
I think it should stay tabled.
Okay.
Until the applicant is present.
Is someone gonna contact the applicant and let him know that he needs to be here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so, just to be clear, um, did we tell the applicant they need to be here today? No, okay, so it's not that.
I think that was at the last meeting.
Right.
I think I said, "We'll look forward to seeing you next month." Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, he raised it, he raised it, we got an opinion, it's fine with me.
I just think that it's worth having a further discussion, and I think if it was in your district, and it was for tourist homes in relatively short order, I would hope that you'd be sensitive to the impact on the neighbors.
Yeah, no, when I, when I voted, when I, when I stopped by FT Valley Orchard on Saturday, I made it very clear that it's important that they be here, which is in part, I think, why I was here, so. I don't disagree with you, I just, I, I just want to know, we're sort of conflating two things. One, we want to talk to the applicant, and now there's like, now there's some new contemplated-
It's an evolving process, all applications are.
I know, but what, what I, if I understand correctly, you're, and tell me if I'm wrong, but you're saying with the removal of the firearms restriction, which is not something we can legally support, you want to possibly backfill with a noise restriction?
In, in, in relation to the contemplated use, yes.
Okay.
Do you need a, do you need a vote to table, or are we just table? I would like a vote to table, yes. And I, Mr. Goff's online, I don't know if he's completely engaged. I don't think, I don't think we would want to be in a position where we, okay, I don't think we want to be in a position to defending a noise condition that there's an enforcement action due to target shooting on, hunting on the property. I think we'd be, that's not where we would be.
It takes us right back to what we got-
Yeah, I think, I think this takes us to enforcement, and watch this enforcement.
Well, yeah, how are you gonna know who's doing the shooting, I mean, this guy could be shooting a Tannerite all day long. This guy could be shooting a Victor caliber, you know, a BMG Brown machine gun. And he can do that by right on his property, how are we gonna prove that it was a person who was paying to be a guest at one of the Airbnbs? I mean, it's just rife with, with enforcement trouble, you know. What, what are you gonna do, you know, set up some sort of a, a death penalty, sure, but how do you know who's doing the shooting without trespassing, or worse? Yes, I, I don't know, but sure, yeah, yeah, have the applicant here and see what he has to say about whether he wants to waive, you know, his rights. I, I feel like that he's smart, given, given the options choice in this discussion. Either you waive your rights as, as they stand, or you don't get your special exception for a constitutional right. Nobody has a right to a, you know, a fruit orchard, if any event, no one's got a constitutional right to that. But you do have a right to hunt, and it certainly affects the value of the property to have such a condition placed on it. So it, it seems to me, it, it's rife with problematic issues, and I, I do think that, you know, you need to train carefully about this. And, and my advice is that you not impose such a condition, including the noise condition, because some of the stuff that I was reading in the code of Virginia is, you know, you can't really enforce, at least with, with respect to shooting ranges, which aren't prohibited under this application. You can't enforce a more stringent, a noise ordinance than is applicable generally. So I, I foresee, I foresee problems in the enforcement, and he did bring it up. He said, "If you recall, that my conscience is bothering me. I don't mean to be any indication, but I think this is an impingement upon my second amendment rights." Well, I don't need to have a bigger red flag than that to advise my client, you all, that unless there's something more than nervous nitty about gunshots, that it's, it's not an appropriate condition.
Well, I would guess I would wonder then if we could do a review, and then similar to the application that we just did, if we're going to just set aside both firearms things that originally came up at the planning commission and noise. I, I do think we have to have something, I mean, that, that corridor is undergoing a lot of change, and there has to be some kind of brakes on the car.
So maybe, maybe you have them come back next month and approach it the way, the way you all structured the Mount Medhi.
I, I do think-
With a year and then three.
Yeah, I do think we need to have the applicant present to talk through review options.
I think that's, I think that's better, because, I mean, who's, you know, enforcing decibel limits and property boundaries? I mean, I understand in the context of the Amesville RSM application came up because of what they were doing, but if we start doing that over and over, I mean, it kind of misses the point, so it's, it's, are people being disturbed or not?
We, we haven't done it since then, so I don't think we have done it over and over, but I do think sometimes it is appropriate, and if it's good enough for folks in Amesville that were worried about their peace of mind, it sure is good enough for people in the 231 corridor.
Yeah, I, I agree that, I feel incredibly-
Well, we have to remind board, I'm sorry, pardon, I just was gonna remind you about the RSM application, that one of the neighbors that was complaining had his own shooting range that he explored the adjacent property that was producing decibel levels in excess of what RSM was, just to, just to remind you all.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I just have one question for Ms. Smith, during the planning, planning commission discussions, did you guys ever discuss the fact that this was not one tourist home, but a multiple?
Yes, we did.
And that phasing in, did you have any of those kinds of-
Well, I think the big selling point for the planning commission on this particular application is the requirement for the owner or manager to live and be on site. I think this would be an untenable application without some sort of on-site presence at all time. And I think that ultimately was, was what, I don't know if it's a level of comfort, but again, similar to the last application, the owner certainly has a, a large interest in having a beautiful property, maintaining it properly, and, and overseeing his guests on his property to make sure it stays that way.
One of the planning commissioners also referenced your 17066K, which requires a minimum of 10 acres as agriculture for a tourist home, and said, certainly, if you need 10 for one, 400 for five is, you know, it's a little more generous.
Something my question is, is that like, if the other commissioners, because you forwarded it to us with the recommendation for approval unanimously, do you think, does your, does your sense tell you that if that condition of shooting had not been on there? Do you feel like it would have been unanimous? If you, if this had come-
I wouldn't want to speculate, I don't think that's fair to anybody.
I'm not asking you to speculate, I was just, in the sense of saying, I'm looking at this application. I'm looking at it in the sense that if we ask this applicant to come back-
I mean, you are speculating, because you're saying if.
This is gonna finish first, which is that if, if a general sense gave you a sense like, yeah, wow, this really, that vote, I feel really, at least for me, or whoever, hinged on this noise thing, which is shooting, that's one thing. But as I look at this application, and I look at, and I, and I agree with Mr. Goff, that it's a huge piece of property, and it looks fine, and I would be hard-pressed to say to the applicant, "No, we want you to come back," for what?
That's what I was asking.
For what? And I would have to come up with that in my mind, and so what I'm asking you is, is that if during that meeting was a really big issue, like that was the issue, was the noise, I could see that, but I'm not, and I get it. I'm not asking you to speculate or speak for other people, I'm just trying to work it through in my brain.
I guess the point of engaging with the applicant is to know if you all are amenable to review or a renewal process, what would be amenable to the applicant in those terms.
Yeah, I just wanted, because I feel like it's a bit of a moving target, so we went from no, we can't, we can't from a legal perspective say no firearms.
Mm-huh.
So, and then you said, "The applicant's not here," then we asked, "What would you say to the applicant?" And then you, you suggested maybe the addition of a noise, decibel-related restriction, but now you're saying that it would be something else.
Well, I mean, you do have to find a way to make things work at times. And I did think that RSM would be a possibility, the same decibel stipulations, but frankly, the owner was agreeable to it at the planning commission level, which is something I can't emphasize enough. I didn't change my mind, the applicant changed their mind.
Okay, so it sounds like we'll have them come back, and maybe the way we address this is similar to what we just talked about in the context of the Orchard event scenario, and you would then say to the applicant, would you, are you willing to accept a one-year administrative review plus some years after that as a protective measure to make sure that whatever he ends up doing is not totally disruptive to the adjacent landowners? Is that kind of where you're headed now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
No.
We need a motion.
I thought the applicant was gonna be present.
There's a motion to table.
Oh, then I'd make a motion to table, till the owner's present, or the time's up.
How about August 7th at 7:00 PM, and then if he's not present again?
Yeah, what's-
It's, if you're gonna table, it's best to table to a date-time specific, and that way we know when to put it on the agenda.
That sounds fine. I meant my motion.
Need a second?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second.
And is, are there, I know on, on the rezoning application, for example, there are time limits?
120 days, so it's in October.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? You'll reach out and find out if August 7th is a problem, I assume. Thank you.
And if, and if it gets tabled again till September, we're still within time.
In time line, yep. All right.
And that section also allows the parties to come together and extend it beyond.
Okay.
Okay, but Board of Zoning Appeals, number of members?
All right, Board members, you discussed this at your last meeting, Mr. Carney did not, you weren't able to join the board in the evening. And so this ordinance amendment was advertised as required, and you had your public hearing at your last meeting. Didn't receive much input from the public in general, but you did hear from planning commissioners and, who were there in joint. Planning commission voted, I believe it was five to one, to recommend approval of amending the ordinance to include the changes in Article Six only, and so that included the cleanup items, changing the word BCA to board in 10 places, and then fixing one section to clarify the number of affirmative votes needed for special exceptions. The remaining Articles 15 and 16 changed the number of BCA members from five to seven, and also changed the number who must vote to approve a variance and appeal from three to four, which is a majority of the entire body rather than a majority of those present. So having deliberate, heard from the public at your last meeting, and deliberated for a while, came to two, two to two votes which failed, you're now, this is back on the table for consideration by the board. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Article Six, could you, so there are two recommended actions, one is to adopt the zoning ordinance amendment with only changes to Article Six?
Yeah.
So you just fleshed that out a little bit?
I'll just pull it up on the screen if that's okay. So Article Six is the same section that guides the approval process for special, special exceptions and special use permits, including 17052, which we've talked about a lot, and 47, all those. So those changes are, as I noted, the first changes to clarify the number of members who must vote an affirmative for a special exception to pass, and that is a majority of members forming a quorum, not a majority of the body.
And regardless of the number-
Regardless, so if three people show up, two could pass, that is in line with state code.
Okay.
And then it says cleanup from the earlier ordinance amendment that reassigned all of the special use permits to special exceptions, and cleaning up the word BCA, changing it to board in 10 places.
And so number of members is outside of Article Six.
That's right, that's all in Article 15 and 16, and you can see those changes in 15 regarding variances, changing three to four, two places, and then in 16, changing five to seven, and then clarifying when the change took place.
Okay, so a motion to adopt the zoning ordinance amendment with only changes Article Six would leave the membership at five?
That is correct.
Okay, I'll, I'll put forward that motion, so adopt the zoning ordinance amendment with only the proposed changes to Article Six that were submitted to a public hearing.
Okay.
Hold second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'm, clearly, I was the one, I missed last meeting, and I just want to say that I think that it is something that we discussed, and I remember making a comment that Mr. McCalla had suggested that he would welcome more members to the BCA, which I took to heart when he said it. Now that we've changed some things structurally, and the BCA members have gotten training, and having heard, having gotten feedback from BCA members, my feeling is to leave this last tool in the toolbox for future use if we need it, and not pull this last lever quite yet. I was probably thinking a little differently when we first started discussing this, but I think that I'm always in favor of probably a little less when it comes to committee and government, I guess, but anyway, so, sorry for my absence last meeting, but, yeah.
Any other discussion?
I would just say, I think you all know I still support it.
Yeah.
That, you know, appeals are one of the most important functions of our county government, and I feel like if it would strengthen BCA to have a few more members, especially because we're human, we get sick, our loved ones get sick, we travel, things get lost in the shuffle. If it meant having two more people that can sit in on one of the most important legal functions that our county government undertakes, I think it would be a worthwhile endeavor, and frankly, the events of the last year have really brought that into focus. And I, I just can't vote to support something that doesn't include expansion of the BCA.
Yep, and you made good arguments, and I heard them, and I kind of went back and forth on this too. I just, when I look at, I mean, you don't even see BCA meetings with any substantive agenda items anymore. So, I mean, the infrequency of, of them convening and infrequency of what they're hearing and giving, it sounds like everyone's had training, or is in the process of getting zoning-related training, so I, I'd say a lot of role the way it's going.
I was thinking about joining you all with this vote, and then somebody's loved one got sick, and they were out of commission for a while, and I thought, wow, I, that was really the sign that I needed to stick to my guns, that we need seven, because sometimes we are human, and someone does need to fill in for us. Thanks.
And I think I mentioned at the last meeting that this gives us an opportunity to watch and see how things go for the next few months, and if we decide in January that we should have done something now, we have that opportunity to do then. So that's where I am. Mr. Fraser, do you have anything?
Yeah, well, if, if I say anything, it's gonna be taken as unpleasant, but I mean, we've got a couple members who consistently have no idea what they were supposed to do several months after paying the price. I don't know how much training is gonna help anybody like that.
All right, we have a motion, sorry, did I cut you off?
No, I'm just saying, I mean, I, I think everybody's just trying to be political, you're not really looking at the problem.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Should be a roll call, though.
It does. Ms. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right. That is it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Hold second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser.
Thank you for joining this evening.